Moments.
Yeah, it's preparing.
Preparing now, so we're getting ready to go live. We're gonna call the special meeting for Akron City Council to order for April 6th. We're gonna ask for the clerk to do the roll call, just asking for council members. When you hear your name, signify by saying aye.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Omobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville? Swersky?
Aye.
All members are present.
Who's got the radio going?
Into our scheduled special meeting, we do have. Yeah.
Suspend the rules and have a favorable report.
We suspend the rules. Thank you so much. We have a motion for the floor for suspension of the rules. Councilwoman Connor, can you second that motion? Councilwoman Connor, can you second that motion?
I second the motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you so much. Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number three offered by President Somerville. Ordinance approving the sale of two sixty-eight Wheeler Streets, four fifty-one to four fifty-three Allen Street, and four forty-nine Allen Street to Commercial Industrial Consultants Incorporated, determining said property is not needed for public use and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This legislation is to sell three properties, a total of seventeen thousand six hundred and forty square feet of land. Yes, can you hear me? You can hear me? Okay. This legislation is to sell three properties, a total of seventeen thousand six hundred and forty square feet of land, to Commercial Industrial Consultants Incorporated, Mr. Anthony Messina, for thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to construct a twenty-four unit apartment building. These properties are located on the corner of Allen Street and Wheeler, and the conditional use for this project was approved by city council in two thousand and nineteen. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any council members that have any comments or questions regarding this piece? Uh, Councilwoman Amobian, did you have a question?
Yes, I can learn to operate this gadget. Anyway, the question I have, you said that this was approved back in, is it twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen? I couldn't remember.
Two thousand nineteen.
Now, one of the questions we've raised several times, and I'm not really sure how this would be applicable to this, is that we wanted to make sure that all of these apartment complexes had like eighty-five percent of some, some, some high percentage.
Seems that we lost our audio.
Oh. Hold on a minute.
I can hear you, Linda.
Yeah, I'm, I'm muted. Can you hear me now? Yeah, we were talking about the percentage of occupancy. And I know this, like you said, this was approved a year ago. But are we keeping a high percentage of occupancy in all these apartment complexes that we currently have? Because this is, this is close to the university, is that not right?
It is. So I can tell you that, um, of the, uh, market rate apartment units that we have successfully partnered on so far, uh, at least during the tax abatement era, we are seeing robust leasing. Uh, the Bowery, for example, is, uh, closing in on halfway full, and they haven't really fully opened, uh, the whole block yet. Interestingly, uh, at least last touch that I had with the Bowery Group, every single one of the Bowery, uh, apartments have been leased to a new Akron resident. So we're starting to see anecdotal evidence of a lot of the things that we've seen and talked about it at, at the horseshoe. So, um, I, I would say that this would be no different. We have not seen any reason to believe that we're anywhere close to saturation point in terms of the need for new market rate housing and apartments. The law building, as you know, is underway downtown. This is close to the university, but there's still a need, especially in that area, for, uh, attractive living, not just for students, but for faculty, uh, their families and others, graduate students included. So we, we feel we're very high on the project, and no, we have not seen any evidence yet uh, that we are anywhere close to reaching the demand for new market rate apartment living. In fact, we've seen the opposite. We've seen, um, a high demand for it so far.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Malik, did you have a question?
No, Mr. Hardy addressed it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Councilman Fusco?
To, uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules with a favorable report on this item.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman, can you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples? Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number four offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Neighborhood Assistance to enter into a contract with the Akron City School District to provide meal preparation and delivery services as part of the city's annual summer food service program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. This is our annual piece of legislation a- as it relates to our partnership with the Akron Public Schools for our summer feeding program. We anticipate, God willing, uh, that we will administer the program uh, similar to in previous years, which has been highly successful, but happy to take any questions you may have.
Um, any questions at this time? Uh, Councilman Malik?
Yes, I have two things. First, yeah, I mean, you alluded to it, but has there been any communication from Akron Public Schools, I believe, administrators on, on how that might change this summer? And then two, I think I had asked this previously, and I think you had answered it, but if we have questions about the locations, is there who, who ought we to contact?
Certainly. So the, I'll take the last question first there. If, if you, uh, have any questions, feel free to email me or Brittany Schmokel, uh, the Recreation and Parks Manager directly. We'll get that, uh, that set of locations right out to you. As it relates to conversations with Akron Public Schools, we have not, uh, had a deep conversation yet as to how we would, uh, rearrange the program if necessary, but we both are committed to doing the program no matter what. So if we need to adapt, luckily for us, uh, Akron Public Schools now has a fair amount of experience adjusting to that, so, uh, we feel confident we'll still be able to feed our kiddos. But it's, it's something that we need to still sit down and talk about if that, uh, ultimately comes to pass.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Amobian?
Yes, I'll just like to move that this be mayor and council as a whole, please.
Okay, so we have a motion for mayor and council as a whole. Um, will Councilman Lombardo second that motion for us? Don't worry, Phil.
I second. I second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Thank you. Item number five offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract or contracts after publicly advertising for bids for temporary concrete installation over excavations of the divisions of water distribution and sewer maintenance prior to final pavement service, surface repairs by the Division of Highway Maintenance, approving specifications therefore and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of committee. This is our annual, uh, program that we, uh, bid out. It's for our large water main and sewer main breaks. Uh, these are especially needed in the winter time when all we have is the cold patch. So the contractors will bid on this. And like I said, it's the large break. So what will happen is if there's a temporary restoration needs to be done, it's done in concrete. And then when the asphalt plants open up in the spring, like typically this time of year, we will go ahead and do the permanent restoration.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any council members? Seeing none, Councilman Fusco?
I would like to, uh, make a favorable recommendation on this item. And suspend the rules.
Thank you so much. Councilman Neil, would you second that motion?
Motion second.
All right, roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville? Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number six offered by President Somerville. Ordinance ratifying the actions of the Director of Public Service in contracting with San, Spano Brothers Construction Company for emergency repairs to the six-inch water main on Weber Avenue and Brook Street Restoration, authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
President and members of council, back in December, um, in Ward One, Richard, we remember this fairly well, we had a, a pretty big water main break on a six-inch water main on Weber. It actually blew up the brick and, uh, destroyed quite a bit of road. That nineteen seventeen water main, we decided to replace seven hundred and fifty feet of it. And we did a cost analysis of totally tearing out the street, which would have been probably the curb also. So we replaced the water main and we put the brick back. So that's why the cost of this job escalated to the point of, of this price.
Are there any questions or comments from any council members? Seeing none?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, recommend suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
Before we go into the vote, I just now see Councilman Swersky's hand. Yes, Councilman Swersky?
Uh, just, uh, the residents in Weber really appreciate the good and timely work that was done in the fact that the condition of the road, uh, is back to where it was before this unfortunate accident.
Thank you so much. Um, Councilman McKittrick, did you have a comment or question? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Um, can we get a second? Councilman Kammer, can you second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky? Passes thirteen to zero. Item number seven offered by President Somerville. Ordinance ratifying the actions of the Director of Public Service in contracting with H.M. Miller Construction Company for emergency water main repairs and pavement restoration at three locations on Middleton Road in Hudson, Ohio, authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Yes, back last fall on Middleton Road, this is off our sixteen-inch water main that's, it was put in in nineteen fifty-five. We had two slight breaks and we were doing some work up there. Well, then we had a pretty good, uh, break that we could not let run, so we hired H.M. Miller to go in there and fix these three breaks for us.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from any council members? Any comments or questions? Uh, seeing none? Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to, uh, recommend that we suspend the rules with a favorable report. Favorable.
Thank you so much. So we have a motion on the floor. Um, Councilman Swersky, can you second that motion? And we have a second. Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number eight offered by President Somerville. Ordinance ratifying the actions of the Director of Public Service in contracting with Kenmore Construction Company Incorporated for emergency repair of the sixteen-inch water main and pavement restoration at two six seven seven Riverview Road, authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Yes, uh, back in, uh, January, or I'm sorry, December, we had a sixteen-inch water main break on Akron Peninsula, or on Riverview, right, by KB Bioenergy. Um, it was a pretty deep excavation. We hired Kenmore Construction. They went in there and they repaired that water main for us.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from any council members? Uh, Councilman Malik?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the work that was done. I was just driving, uh, there yesterday to go to a park and was specifically looking at that area, and I think they did a great job, so we appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President. Thank you, President Somerville. Recommend a favorable report, uh, with suspension of the rules.
Uh, can we get a second from, uh, Councilwoman Samples?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Uh, roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil? Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number nine offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent or her designee after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract or contracts for the purchase of two UPS backup power units at the water reclamation facility and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. I'm sure most of you or all of you are familiar with Tom Smith down at the, uh, wastewater plant. He has nursed this thing. It's twenty-seven years old. He's pretty much said that it is totally wore out. So we have more than got our money's worth of this UPS system. The UPS system is uninterrupted, uninterrupted power source, so if we get a lightning striker, we lose power. This keeps our controls running for at least a half hour till the power comes on. So those intermittent power blips, we don't, it doesn't interrupt our system down there, so. Um, Tom says it's time to replace this, and like I said, uh, we're going with his recommendation.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from any council members? Councilwoman Amobian, did you have a question or comment? All right, Councilman Fusco?
Yes, President Somerville, I'd like to make a favorable recommendation with suspension of the rules.
Very good. Councilwoman Baylor, will you second that motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number ten offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service or his designee to enter into a contract or contracts after publicly advertising for bids for the repair and/or replacement of three expansion joints in the high-market parking deck and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Uh, some of you remember last year that, uh, we did three of these other expansion joints in this parking deck. Uh, there's six total, so this year, we're gonna do the other three, and that, that will take all, they, that will take care of all the expansion joints in the high-market parking deck.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from any of our council members? All right. Seeing none, Councilman Fusco?
Like to make a favorable recommendation with suspension of the rules.
Thank you. Councilman Malik, will you second that motion for us?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number eleven offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement and grant an easement on city-owned property to the Ohio Edison Company to access its utility line serving the water reclamation facility and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Uh, with our upgrade to the headwork projects, last year, Ohio Edison had to rerun the main feed, uh, the sixty-nine thousand KV, uh, power coming into the plant. So they did relocate it, but they would like an easement even though we own the property, so there's no money exchange in this. We are just granting them an easement of our property to access their electric.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from any of the council members? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Councilman Fusco?
Yes, President Somerville, I'd like to make a favorable recommendation with suspension of the rules.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilwoman Amobian, would you second that motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McKittrick? Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero. Item number twelve offered by Mayor Horrigan and President Somerville. Ordinance supporting the Summit County COVID-nineteen Small Business Emergency Relief Grant Program by authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a grant agreement with the Greater Akron Chamber of Commerce in support of the program, authorizing expenditures in support of the program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Uh, as you all know, and I'm sure are working with, our small businesses have been disproportionately impacted by the very necessary and proper public health orders that we've had to put in place, uh, coming down from Governor DeWine and Dr. Amy Acton. Uh, what you have before you is legislation allowing the city of Akron to donate a hundred thousand dollars, an initial tranche of a hundred thousand dollars into the COVID-nineteen fund that Summit County has set up at the Greater Akron Chamber. This fund will provide five thousand dollar grants to Akron small businesses. Our money, uh, will go to Akron's small, small businesses, uh, who have applied for SBA loans or the Payment Protection, uh, Payroll Protection Act, but were not approved for those loans. So this is gonna actually be going to protect those that are, um, most vulnerable in this particular time to try and stretch those dollars as far as we can go. Again, this is an issue, an initial, uh, set of funds that we're gonna put over there. Uh, much like Akron Cares, my, my guess is that, uh, these funds will be gone, uh, much quicker than we, we want them to. And so Integrated Development has been working for the past three weeks, uh, to try and get a handle on what would be the best intervention for our small businesses at this time. We've, we've called on more than four hundred, uh, restaurants, bars, beauty shops, uh, barbers, um, and other retailers in Akron. Uh, we're connecting them with available resources. We're getting information from the ground as to what they need. They need money. And so as we look at our own finances, which are obviously, uh, strained and will become more strained, we're, we're working to be creative with the funds that we will be getting, uh, over the course of the next few weeks and, and set up situat, or set up strategies. I should say that as more money hopefully becomes available from the state and federal governments, we can get them to the small businesses we need. So again, this is just really, uh, approving the partnership, allowing us to, uh, to put an initial hundred thousand over into the fund at the chamber, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Malik?
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate this partnership. I think that, you know, obviously all of our small, small businesses are hurting. I've appreciated that as, as I've reached out to some of them. Uh, they've all heard from, already heard from someone from Integrated Development before I called. Uh, so very much appreciate that outreach. And I think this, uh, puts our money where our mouth is. Um, I did have one question. Um, I know that this is being finalized still, but it, it did seem like the initial language from the chamber was that people, businesses who apply for an SBA loan, would be automatically approved if they met the conditions of SBA loan, and if they were denied an SBA loan, would, will still, would still be considered. Is that correct, or is it only if they are denied an SBA loan?
No, that is, you are correct. So, um, everyone will need to apply for some sort of federal assistance in order to be eligible for the local funding. But if you are approved for that federal assistance, you automatically get approved for the local funds. But we wanted to make sure, Mayor Horrigan in particular, wanted to make sure that those businesses that may be denied based on bad credit, but not a bad business, don't get left out. And so our funding will go to supplement, uh, Summit County's funding to make sure that those that, for whatever reason, aren't able to get federal resources, still can get something in this time of need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Amobian?
I just wanna make sure that I heard you correctly, on Mr. Hardy. So if they're eligible for that ten thousand dollar loan that ultimately turns into a grant, um, they still could be eligible for these dollars. Um, if, let's say they apply for these first, but they have to apply for the SBA first. Let's say, would these dollars kick in while they're waiting, or they have to wait for an answer from SBA? I'm not sure how quickly this process is going.
Sure. So, um, your understanding is correct. So all they have to do is show the chamber that they've applied for federal funding, um, in order to get the process started locally. Now, i- in order to, if you get approved, uh, for federal funding, it's an automatic approval locally. If you don't get approved for whatever reason, we are gonna make sure. for federal funding, it's an automatic approval locally. If you don't get approved for whatever reason, we are going to make sure that there's funding available still. To comment just briefly on what we're seeing on the ground, as good as our local SBA folks are in the Cleveland region, and they are working overtime, the Small Business Administration was not prepared to deal with the overwhelming response. And so the wait time for underwriting for these loans is much, much longer than normal. So what we've been doing is for those that have existing banking relationships, almost every single one of our banks is willing to make a bridge loan right now while you wait for your federal support, whether it's for the emergency injury loan or for the Payroll Protection Act, they can do that. For those that don't have a traditional banking relationship, that's where the chamber fund is so important. But the chamber fund is really, can be matched with anything. So there's no disqualification if you get the federal funds or you apply for state relief when that comes. These funds are meant to be supplements to those other much larger loans that traditional banks or the federal government through the SBA are doing right now. So you are understanding it correctly. It's just that we are working very, very hard through our congressional delegation. They're working overtime as well to try and get the SBA, the resources they need to pump these funds into the community. There's no shortage of application happening right now. As Councilman Malik said, we've made sure that almost every business that we can get a hold of has what they need to make application, and they're successfully making application. But while they wait, there are bridge loans happening if they have a traditional banking relationship. And if they don't, we are specifically putting the Akron funds into a bucket to help those who don't have the traditional credit score, the traditional banking relationship, to make sure that the chamber has flexibility. And our money, by the way, I should note, is being matched by Jump Start out of Cleveland. So there's actually two hundred thousand dollars in that bucket as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Madam President, a couple more things I wanted to follow up on. Is there anybody keeping track of all of these companies that have applied? So that, I know there's a marketplace database that's being established. So at some point in our lifetime, we may have a good database to tell us how many small businesses we have, so that if we ever have such a terrible pandemic again, we won't have to kind of scurry around and try to figure out who needs help. And I'd like to follow that up, Madam President, with a motion for mayor and council as a whole.
So we do have a motion on the floor. Just want to make sure that there's no other comments or questions.
There was a comment before that. The question, did you hear that, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, ma'am. And we will, I will, I've taken note, and we will work with our state and federal partners to make sure we get that. And as we've been going through this process, you are absolutely right. We've been cleaning our data so that no matter what happens, we have a very good handle on who our small businesses are going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilman Swersky.
Yeah, and I know in a crisis, in a time of urgent need, we put a lot of resources into contacting the businesses, and we do in a lot of other projects. But I think this inventory could, would also be best used after this crisis, so that we establish kind of a early warning system where we're aware of businesses that are struggling or thinking of going in and out. I mean, often we get that information anecdotally, but I'm pleased to see this inventory taking place. And I think a follow-up in the pursuit of a kind of early warning check-ins with people, just how are you doing? Is there something else we could do with? I know a lot of that is probably already going on, but it's good to see. It will be very systematic and comprehensive.
Thank you, Councilman Swersky. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Councilman Malik.
Just going off of that, the last two points, I may be making a connection that's already been made, but I know that the Akron Police Department had also been reaching out to businesses and updating their contacts. So to the extent that there's information sharing there, I think it's, you know, it's only further helpful in building, you know, a database.
Thank you, Councilman Malik. At this time, we do have a motion on the floor, Councilman Fusco.
Is there, well, first, you should probably vote on the motion for council as a whole, and then I'd like to make a favorable motion for suspension of the rules.
And you know what? Actually, Councilwoman Amobian, if you would be so kind, you can actually combine those motions. You do a motion for suspension of the rules and also council as a whole, okay?
That's fine. I'll second it, if that's what is needed.
All right, so I think Linda, Councilwoman Amobian, has amended her motion. Councilman Fusco, will you second it?
Second.
Thank you so much. Roll call.
Baylor.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Lombardo.
Aye.
McHittick.
Aye.
Malik.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Amobian.
Aye.
Samples.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
Aye.
Passes thirteen to zero.
We will now go to the portion of our meeting which is our public comment. So we do want to remind all of our viewers, the residents of Akron, you can still participate in our Akron City Council meetings, particularly during our public comment period by submitting a request at publiccomments@akronohio.gov. We have received three public comments. I'm going to ask now at this time if the clerk will read those in.
Okay.
First one, dear council members, my name is Jo Montevan. I am a lifelong resident of Akron. I realize that since the pandemic started, it must seem that all you can do is solve problems as they arise. Thank you for your hard work during this crisis. Though it is important to remember to step back and look at the big picture, social distancing distancing will be the state of affairs for at least another month, and the impact it is going to have on the city will last much longer. I have an idea that can not only save lives now, but also put Akron on a better path for the economic recovery in the future. Let's get Akron back to work faster. Now is the time to act. Robust testing now will put Akron on a better footing for the economic recovery following the COVID-19 outbreak. Testing every citizen of Akron will allow us to track positive cases, identify hotspots with accuracy, not only flatten the curve, but reduce the overall number of cases. According to the Ohio State University's projection, flattening the curve will reduce the number of deaths, but not reduce the number of cases. Therefore, doubling the amount of time social distancing will need to remain in effect. We still have time to change the situation through testing. Tracking and identifying positive cases will reduce the number of infections transmitted. Right now, it is estimated that each infected person goes on to infect three people. If all positive cases are identified, the infection rate will be reduced through quarantining those patients. This proposal is a huge endeavor in an uncertain time. There are many unknowns now and on the horizon for all of us. This may seem like a good reason not to act. I believe, however, this means bold action is required now. By taking large steps now, we can increase our knowledge of the situation at hand and have a better picture of the best course of action going forward. Uncertainty today leads to more uncertainty in the future. So the faster and better picture we have of the present will put us on a better path moving forward. The logistics of a massive expansion of testing are unclear at this point. Testing every person in Akron would be a large undertaking and mean a great deal of work. It may be possible to use the labs at the University of Akron to expand testing. Many universities are also offering testing. As a first step, identifying a lab or multiple labs capable of handling the volume would be necessary. The cost of testing nearly two hundred thousand residents of Akron will, of course, be quite large, but the cost of inaction may be even greater. A good solution may be a municipal bond designed not only to raise money for this project now, but also to offset the rise of property taxes that would be necessary to pay bondholders. This could be accomplished by matching the interest owed to the bondholder proportionately to the rise in property tax that would be owed in the future by the bondholder. To generate incentive for property owners, the bond would be designed to proportionally offset the add bylaw tax increase in the future, giving the property owners, bondholders, the option of either taking the value of the bond at the time it reaches maturity or discounting current property tax for a set time where the discount would equal to the amount that would be otherwise owed at the time the bond would have reached maturity. A bond of this type could also be designed to create a larger incentive to those letting the bond reach full maturity rather than taking the discounted tax rate. In these trying times, people are hungry to feel that they are doing their part to help. I believe a bond designed specifically to help us fight the coronavirus would be a popular idea that would create civic engagement. At a time when we feel the most separate, giving people a common action, a common cause, and a common purpose can bring us together to bravely face the unknown challenges ahead. Governor DeWine is taking great steps to flatten the curve for the state. By taking bold action, Akron can increase the benefit we are getting from measures already in place. We will weather the storm better by taking steps to map our current position. To be clear, this is not a specific plan. This is an idea that still requires quite a bit of planning. This idea, if properly implemented, can drastically improve the impact of COVID-19 for the people, businesses, and the city itself. Though City Council has suspended meeting in person, this is not the time to do nothing. It is the time to take action. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for taking the time to consider this matter. Second email is, "Good morning." I have the following comment for tonight's meeting. Good evening. My name is Emoke Okolo, and I am currently a third-year law student at the University of Akron School of Law. My comment this evening relates to what is going on in our local jails and state prisons, given this COVID-19 health crisis. The United States incarcerates over 2.2 million people in prisons and jails, with many facilities operating well over capacity, including the Summit County Jail. Incarcerated persons have higher rates of underlying health issues than members of the general public, including higher rates of respiratory disease, heart disease, diabetes, obesity, HIV/AIDS, substance abuse, and other conditions that suppress immune response. The close conditions and lack of access to hygiene products in prisons and jails make these institutions especially susceptible to viral pandemics. It is extremely important that we, as a community, urge our local and state officials to do everything they can to protect those working in corrections and those incarcerated. Reform Alliance has outlined recommendations for how correctional institutions and courts should respond to this health crisis. This plan is supported by numerous social justice organizations, including the National Urban League, Cut Fifty, and Freedom Works. I'm asking our City Council to review this plan, adopt a resolution in support of this plan, and to make individual calls or send individual messages to our governor, county executive, and county sheriff, urging them to reduce, review these recommendations, and do everything in their power to implement them. Thank you for your time and consideration. The last one. Jim Wirick, "Dear council, as the pandemic and depression make Swiss cheese of our city and state 2020 budgets, I seriously suggest canceling the $4.5 million construction of the planned Eller Roundabout. It is not essential at this time. Voluntarily foregoing this project will be a good faith action. It will show the taxpayers responsibility in making cuts." Thank you, and I forwarded all of these emails to you.
Thank you so much. And again, we want to thank those who submitted to participate during our public comment for this evening. And again, we'll make sure that all council members have a copy of all the public comment requests that were submitted for us on this evening. Just to let you know, council members, our next meeting will be Monday, April the twentieth. In light of all that is going on, we just don't have enough legislation to meet every single Monday. So our next meeting will be Monday, April the twentieth at seven o'clock via Zoom. Councilman Malik.
Sure. I just wanted to mention with regard to the second public comment about jails and prisons, I think obviously we're seeing this is a very important issue nationally and in Ohio. And I had a chance to reach out to our prosecutor, Ms. Wilmes, earlier today, and it looks like there are only about eleven inmates associated with Akron who are in the Summit County Jail right now, and they're being very conscientious about how they refer those cases and how they deal with that. And I was very heartened to hear that. I also reached out to the Summit County, and they have significantly decreased their population over the last month in the jail. And they've also set up procedures to, if there was a positive test, to be able to quarantine those folks in specific pods. And also, they're quarantining new detainees who are coming in for violent felonies. So with that being said, I just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, it does seem that there is significant work being done on this, and obviously, you know, we can continue to look at it. If possible, I also was just going to ask if maybe Mr. Hardy or Ms. Nish, if they're available. Maybe it can be dealt with otherwise, but if just a few words could be said about the Internal Budget Task Force and just how it's going about its work, and whether there's any preliminary information that might be available sometime soon.
Councilman Hardy, I mean, Mr. Hardy, do you have anything to share regarding that?
Sure. Just to provide a brief overview, the Budget Task Force has met twice, but we continue to talk every single day in terms of our different assignments and pieces of work that we're working on. We will be bringing back to council, I'm sure, within a matter of a month, give or take overall picture of what we believe we're going to be dealing with and how we want to go after it. I think a couple of things can be said just based on everything that we've seen, both nationally, statewide, as well as beginning to see locally. And that is that our income tax, which makes up fifty-eight percent of our general fund, is going to be impacted by the economy being shut down. It's going to be impacted greatly month over month in terms of tax receipts. And so what we're going to need to do together with City Council is be very intentional about how we rework our 2020 operating budget, as well as take hard looks at our capital budget as well, which I know both have been passed. So while I think it's premature yet to provide any predictions or recommendations, I can tell you that everything that we have seen and that we have been told from the national experts that we've been in touch with, Brookings and others, is that we are looking at a 2008, '09 type recession at least. And so it's going to be a very significant challenge for us and for City Council to work through together. But we will be bringing all of our work to council as we complete it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council Malik and Mr. Hardy. At this time, Councilman Neil, do I see your hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have a comment?
Yes, I have a couple. One, I was on a call, and we know that school is delayed at least until May. And one of the challenges was the digital divide. Students having access to internet service was informed by one of our school board members, Vice President NJ Akbar, that they have ordered hotspots, but I think to his wording, they only ordered like a hundred and fifty. Wanted to know if we've reached out. I saw where Spectrum was offering some kind of like, I think, open service. Do we know of those service providers that, be it Spectrum, AT&amp;T, I don't know all the other ones. Have we reached out to them and asked them to make Wi-Fi free at this time, so that, you know, residents who normally couldn't afford could have access during this period? That's one question. The other one, it was good to see that the Beacon Journal took their limitation off of being able to read their paper online, since people are challenged with being able to get information. I know we've had our digital billboard companies offer to work with us to get information out. I have seen some information. I don't know if we've tried to correlate all of those so that we can utilize those to the best of our ability to get information out. But at this time, with social distancing and people not being able to go to some of the main places where they would get information, like the library and the places of worship, I think it's important that we coordinate that effort to as best as possible. And when we talk about communication, I know that the services that we have with White Space have been changed. I don't know, we haven't, as a council, had an opportunity to look at how we're going to utilize that, what was $75,000. But, you know, we're challenged on getting information out to our constituents. And, you know, now that we're not going to meet till April, I'd like for us to take a look at how can we utilize the technology that we have to look at how we can best leverage our resources so that we can create tools to be able to communicate with our constituents in a more consistent and uniform manner, so that they're getting information from once, from one place. There are open source platforms that can be utilized that we would have control over that I, I think we could look at. I know, Council, we have the ability to form special committees, but I, I hope we don't wait till April 20th to meet with all this changing every day. We need to be able to refine how we communicate and engage with our, our constituents. So I know we have that budget to look at. One other thing, Madam President, I heard Mr. Hardy, when he spoke about, as so many communities are doing, every budget that was made is going to have to be relooked at. This council passed to put the budget online. That, that availability is still there for us, free of charge to use it. If we ever needed a tool now, we need it now. Mr. Hardy talked about the tax receipts. There was a module within that tool that allowed each citizen to see how their tax dollars would be utilized. It would give us, as a council, the ability to see if we took, I heard somebody say, a citizen recommended that we delay the Eller Roundabout project. We would be able to see when we delay that, where we put the money, how it affects the overall budget. Not only us, would it, us to communicate and allow the administration to communicate to us, but it will allow us to communicate this to our constituents. We need tools like these in a time like this because even when we get past, and I'm hoping we don't have to go like some communities that have already extended theirs out to June, hopefully we, we can get back to some kind of new normal at the end of April. We are still going to need these tools to monitor the flow of resources. I know, I, I was looking at the CD, CDBG funds report from the National League and it was showing the dollars that went out to every city. And it had Akron for somewhere around 3.6 under one category or 1.8 under another. So that 5.4, which is probably, Mr. Hardy can speak to this, is probably already most of it accounted for. But even to be able to, as, as Councilwoman Amobian said, help us to be able to track that and communicate to our constituents how that money is being used and with ourselves, how we can best leverage those dollars. So, you know, it would be in our best interest to form task force and work together on these things so that we can communicate between ourselves first, but definitely with our constituents before April 20th. Then last but not least, I would urge us to reach out, possibly to Judge Ofield, I mean, Odom, excuse me, and those members from the Akron Camp Real Estate Investment Association who have come down to talk about the water bill. Because I was on a call where the lobbyist for the Ohio Real Estate Investment Association has spoke about the mandate for no evictions. And of course, if there's no evictions, that means that you cannot turn off someone's water either. And the, the, the challenges that, 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 that may bring. And there were some good ideas on there. Again, I don't think we want to, we want to try to be as much engaged and ahead of some of these discussions and a part of some of these discussions as we can be. Because the challenge with the water bill was, since it was mandated, a lot of them were talking about asking municipalities to forgive those loans that where residents don't pay their water bills. So that that doesn't go back on the landlord. So there's, there's a lot of different discussions that are taking place. I'd just like to see us put the tools together so that we can be engaged, to be a, a, a part of these and if possible, even ahead of some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Neil. And again, although this body is not meeting until April 20th, we will all still be working. So encourage you, Councilman Neil, to reach out to council members to address and tackle some of those issues that you just talked about. So thank you, Councilwoman Amobian.
I just have one question. I'm not sure, I'm, I think Mr. Hardy could probably answer this. Is a city eligible for any of the federal grant money that's available? And if we are, have we applied for anything?
Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Amobian, we as a municipality, under 500,000 in population, are not eligible for any direct federal assistance. However, we are getting, as Councilman Neil discussed, additional CDBG and ESG, which stands for Emergency Shelter Grant allocations as part of the CARES Act. But the other federal aid that you hear going directly to states and cities, that is not something that we can apply for directly.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Samples?
Am I muted? Yeah, I am. Thank you. Just briefly. So I know with everything that's going on right now, none of us are having board meetings. I do plan on trying to have some live stream meetings to stream from my YouTube over to my Facebook. Is there first a way where we can utilize maybe our council website or maybe White Space can sort of kind of connect our, our pages to that? So our residents will know, so then they still can have that interaction with us. And then secondly, I know when we get to the end of this and we're all going to come back to council, is there going to be maybe some steps put in place where maybe we're taking our temperatures before we come into office or whatnot? I'm just thinking down the road here, something we can prepare for, since they're saying that maybe we'll be able to come out of, stay at home come May 1st. I don't know what that looks like. I just say that because I, I know that it, I think it would give a lot of people a lot of ease knowing that, you know, we're in an office, but none of us have fevers kind of thing because it is 13 plus three of us. If that's something that we could maybe talk about, work on prior to us going back to council.
Thank you so much. Yes, there has been some, definitely some conversation as how we as ward council people can still communicate with our constituents through all of this. And so here at the council office, we are willing to work with, you know, council members to figure out, you know, what that looks like, whether that's meeting, setting something up, doing something on Facebook, YouTube, Zoom meetings, however. So there's definitely some options. Please reach out to Sarah so that we just kind of figure out what's going to be the best fit for you, the many ward constituents. Last comment, Councilman Malik?
Sure. Yeah, just to that last point, I think that working with Sarah, she was very helpful and Kevin wasn't getting. We were going to try to do a Zoom meeting in place of our April board meeting and we got to put that on the website. And actually, I just seen earlier today, Facebook is going to do some webinars for elected officials on best ways to use Facebook Live in this time. So I'll make sure to send that to everyone, but definitely echo, I mean, to whatever degree we can, you know, keep people aware of what's going on. I think if I'm correct, that the mayor is going to have a, he's already had one Facebook Live Town Hall, is I think having another one tomorrow and we can share that information with people. So I think whatever, so much of the values in reassuring people that, you know, that these things are being worked on and that their questions are being addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Malik. At this time, if we can have a motion to adjourn, Councilman Fusco?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Kammer, will you second that motion?
I will second that motion.
All in favor, let's just say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Well done.